See what you call the roll, please.
David Burris. Wes Grimes.
Present.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
There.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Ray Brony.
Here.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
If you're joining me for the bunch of letters.
To the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, conflict of interest, if there's anything that you're concerned about with the vote, please let the council know before you vote on that particular item. The motion to approve the agenda with one amendment. Under due business, item L. Last sentence, uh, sentence, bids received until February 1, 2021, needs to change to bids received until February 10, 2021.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the amended item L. L, uh, the last part of the item, last sentence, bids received until February 1, is changed to bids received until February 10, 2021.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They have an approved agenda. I have a motion to approve amendments from the December 7th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes, December 7th, House Meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the bills in between, please.
Make a motion to approve bills in between the amount of $116,444.67.
Second.
Discussion?
I got a question. I can't find my bills in between sheet. I apparently. Know the one that actually has all, all the day offs. Well, there was, there was ones where we bought a rope for down the park. Apparently did we get them analyzed or?
Yes, we did.
But that's the next one.
Sorry, I do have.
It apparently got cut.
Well, the whole deal here. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm skipping ahead here. I'm all jacked up here.
Okay, very back on track?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, any other questions on bills in between? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims, please.
I make a motion to approve the current claim of $104,284.54.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Now, I'm back there just. Our rope must've got cut down there at the park. Is that what's going on?
Ropes aren't cheap, are they?
Well, that's what I was wondering. I thought, holy cow, that must be a hemp rope.
No, that isn't cheap, Eric.
Don't go there, Wes.
That's all I had.
If it's a hemp rope, hemp rope should be able to make a profit out of it. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, communications from the public. Do we have anybody that wants to address your counsel?
Uh, yes.
That's your petition. Um, if you could state your name, address, city of residence, state.
Deborah Johnston.
No?
It's on.
Hello?
Please, hold a second.
I'm Deborah Johnston, 1023 Evanston Avenue in Hot Springs. I am coming as a resident of Block 17 Fargo Apprentice Edition. And I will be recusing myself from voting on this petition when it comes forward. Uh, you will find it in the side pocket of your folders there. In November of eight, of this year, the Planning and Zoning Committee approved recommendation that the city vacate the alley from up there by on the property of the armory. And this is on Block 17. So the rest of the neighborhood, the entire block of Block 17, would like to also vacate the rest of the alley on the premise that, um, per code 9-45-10, if Planted Street or Alley, um, has not been used in the last 20 years, um, it can be vacated. And this alley has never been developed and the houses have been there for 42 years. So I think it reaches that twice over. So, um, we're starting the process of hearings and would like your support to help us vacate this alley.
Shouldn't the city's name be on this petition until we're clear of the alley?
Yes.
And some mayor sign in it?
Uh, looking to legal counsel for that, uh, can I?
Shouldn't the city's name be on this petition with mayor sign in it?
Yeah, we, uh, I think we discussed that. Well, when I initially was asked about it, was asked this mainly about the part where the city would, it seems kind of redundant if the city would petition itself, but that's the process. So the city should be on petition also.
City should be on this.
So let me ask a question, Deborah. You said that, was it back in November of?
Yeah, November 18th, Planning and Zoning.
Okay. That they recommended the city?
They recommended the city vacate the alley by resolution without a plat, recommended that the city vacate the alley from 11th Street to the neighbor to the east, the Mason West property line. And then I started the petition from the Masons on down for the rest of the block.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
But doesn't every landowner, each person that's on here have signed the petition to get?
I have all their signatures.
Except for the city.
Except for the cities. So I was told to get all the neighbors. And then what was starting out as us writing on the city, I think the city's now writing on our, their petition. I don't know.
I'm getting at before we can pass this, shouldn't the city's name be on there?
And possibly the county's, because they have a couple lots. The county owns two of these lots too.
That's what the county needs to sign off too.
I can rectify that. Yes.
I, I, I.
Well, you know, I just was going off, the planning and zoning was having you vacate the alley on the Armory property.
And you went to the county and got the listing too, and they didn't include their name, did they, in the 200-foot radius and the, to any property owners?
No, I just took that off of myself. They didn't specify.
I, I would have known from voting on this if, if the county and city decided to do.
So if I add the city of Hot Springs and get the mayor's signature, and then I'll have to go to the Fall River County?
And we're not voting tonight, she is just, uh, private giving you the petition, so we would have not have to do that.
But they'll show up, give us a different petition with everything on it.
Okay.
And there's no, there's no utilities in there?
Nope, there's never been anything put down through there. All the utilities come from the street, Evanston and Fresno on the far next block. Okay. All right. So I'll take care of those issues.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thanks, Deb. Garland, my question to you is, can I sign the petition without, uh, direction from the council?
Why not? Initially, we were just looking at the city. Well, in my initial response, that's why our plans were, were for the petition to be written up and signed by you, as far as I was concerned. Because initially, remember, we were just gonna vacate the part that the city, you know, the, the city's portion. So no, I, I think, yeah, as far as petitioning, because council had to approve it. Uh, I don't think any council approval to, to do the petition.
Sign it before it comes to them?
Yeah.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions for Deborah? All right. Thank you, Deborah. Any other communications from the public? All right, that takes us to our first quarterly update item. Uh, Olivia, move the chamber. Thank you.
Hello? All right. Um, good evening, Mayor Nelson, city council members, city officials, and members of the community. Thank you for inviting me to give the Chamber of Commerce Fourth Quarter Report. Although 2020 has not been easy, I am pleased to share a little bit of good news to end the year on a good note. South Dakota Tourism recently made federal money available that allowed destination marketing organizations like Chambers of Commerce to apply for some care's funding. Based on a percentage of our peak marketing budget, I applied for funding and was approved for a grant of $38,900. This grant came with strict guidelines and a deadline that the money is to be spent by the end of December 2020. We're very grateful to receive this funding, but the rules do not allow us to hold anything over until 2021. We contracted with Evergreen Media, who's very well aware of all the rules and regulations, to oversee a marketing campaign which, per the rules, must include a safe travel message. As part of this campaign, we were able to shoot some new Hot Springs video. And due to the time of year as well as time constraints, we could not film much outdoors or include all members, but we worked diligently with Evergreen to shoot interiors and focus on showing as much as we could. This footage was then edited to be used as part of a digital marketing campaign that was planned for the grant money, such as pre-roll videos and 30-second commercial. We do plan on shooting more footage in the spring as part of the Chambers 2021 budget to build up our digital library. And it is allowed for the raw footage to be re-edited for use on our website. Also included in the grant money campaign was a digital package with South Dakota Magazine, email and direct mail marketing, and some radio and television advertising. So now's the time of year where we start planning our peak season campaign, and we have already placed our ads in the South Dakota Vacation Guide, Southern Hills Vacation Guide, and Black Hills Visitor. We are going to be working with South Dakota Magazine next year as they plan to do a number of stories on the Hot Springs area, including early discoveries of fossil cycads in Fall River County, artists on River Street, waters of Fall River County, and the Pioneer Museum's new Charles Hogan's exhibit. The magazine comes out bi-monthly, and we have committed to ads in all six issues. To increase our presence in the magazine, we're also going to be offering our members some co-op advertising opportunities. At the recent Tourism Committee meeting, we were reminded by Brett Mactigal of the Fall River County Herald-Star that quite a while back, Hot Springs used to be known as the picture city of the Black Hills. The committee liked that description, so after discussing the possibilities, we decided to use this as the theme for a cohesive ongoing campaign. Our tagline will be Hot Springs, the Picture City. And this ties in very well with the current trend of photo-heavy marketing and the sharing of photos on social media, such as Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, and various travel forums. We also have options for using the slogan Picture This or Picture Yourself in Hot Springs, associated with Hot Springs places of interest and good photographs. As the Wind Cave Elevator now has been repaired, if COVID restrictions have been lifted, we can include Wind Cave in our advertising. Our last website upgrade was quite a few years back, so an upgrade is in the works, and we're also putting out a new tourism brochure. Normally, we would have had the brochure ready for January to participate with Black Hills and Badlands Tourism Association at the various travel and trade shows, but the January travel show, which would have been in Denver, has been canceled due to COVID-19, and there is still some discussion as how well attended the other shows will be. We still have the option, though, to participate in other shows that take place later in the year. We're also excited to be working with the Fall River County Herald-Star on putting together our 2021 Hot Springs Welcome Magazine, which comes out in spring. The Chamber will also put out a new city map and dining guide. Regarding retail and business, we had a successful merchants trick-or-treat on Halloween with over 18 local businesses participating. Ace Hardware reported on Facebook that they gave away 340 treats. During November and December, we've been running a shop, small shop, local campaign with local radio and television ads, uh, sorry, newspaper ads, as well as some advertising in the Custom Chronicle. For the Thanksgiving weekend, which featured Small Business Saturday, we took advantage of a discounted rate and ran a full-color ad, full page, in the Rapid City Journal to encourage shopping in Hot Springs. We did not have a Christmas cookie cruise this year, and we had very little interest from the local businesses in doing an alternative ad, but the parade did take place, and we again sponsored the storefront decorating contest. Winners of the contest will be personally notified by the chamber, and the winning businesses will be announced soon in the newspaper and on KCMX radio. We choose to be optimistic about 2021 and are proceeding accordingly, so we're planning our usual events for next year. I am very pleased to announce that we have hired Jarrett Wymer as our new executive assistant and events coordinator, and he will join us on January 4th for what we hope will be a busy and fruitful year. In March, we will hold the 81st Annual Chamber Meeting and Awards Dinner. And although it seems early to be asking people to think of nominations, we need a fair amount of lead time to receive nominations, prepare candidate bios, and send out ballots. Anyone may make a nomination, but only chamber members may vote. The individual awards are Citizen of the Year, and then the Youth, uh, Volunteer, which is the Joyce Farrell Youth Volunteer of the Year Award. The other Business of the Year categories are Retail Business, Hospitality Business, Service Business of the Year, and we also seek nominations for the Community Pride Award. Please give some consideration to offering a nomination. The deadline for nominations is January 22nd, 2021. And if you would like to know the full criteria, it is available on Spring Tides, the monthly Chamber newsletter, and we're also happy to email you the nomination package. So as we come to the end of 2020, I would like to thank you, Mayor Nelson, city council members, and the city of Hot Springs and their personnel for your ongoing support. We appreciate our Chamber Board of Directors, Chamber and Committee members, and Chamber staff for their continued commitment to Hot Springs. We're grateful to our veterans and first responders, and thank you to the community of Hot Springs for everything you do for our wonderful little town. We hope that 2021 will bring everyone happiness, peace, and prosperity, and we look forward to a great new year with good things to come. Thank you for listening to my report. I hope everyone has a fun, safe, happy holiday season, and I wish you all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now that's amazing, so full of great information.
And I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Any questions?
Congratulations to Jared and Aspire. Hope that works out to your guys?
I guess.
Thank you.
One question, Olivia. Were you able to spend the 39?
You better.
Good job.
I can spend money if I have to. No, it actually was great because instead of piecemealing it, which would eat up the time, and then I'd have to be social, is this a good deal? How much does that cost? We asked, um, Lawrence and Schiller, who does the, uh, matching funds campaign with the bid board money, so they're very well aware of the rules. And we asked Evergreen Media, who's our member, and who also works with, uh, they do a lot of marketing in the hills. And we asked if they'd put in a very quick one-pager with a proposal of how they'd like to spend the money. Lawrence and Schiller declined. They said they'd love to spend the money, but, and I guess it was a time limit, they didn't want to give me a breakdown, so we couldn't use them. And Evergreen had a really quick, clever plan utilizing the leads from the bid board. Um, through the year, the bid board pays Yellowstone Journal, and we have in excess of 8,000 leads, both physical addresses and, uh, email. And because they qualified and chose to sign up, we are allowed to send them digital marketing as well as direct mailing. So we did that, we cut the video. The video is gonna work because we can add to it. And, uh, so Evergreen had this really comprehensive, good plan. I still got 700 bucks left, and I told them they'd better find something good by the end of the year.
Good job. Thank you for being so diligent with that, with those available funds.
Appreciate it.
On behalf of the city, uh, thank you for trying to navigate this crazy year that we've been in, maximizing the exposure for Hot Springs and getting this out there in front of everyone. It's been a challenging year, and I appreciate everything that you do for our community. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Dawn isn't able to join us tonight. She ended up getting sick, uh, so she's where she needs to be. We'll get her, uh, on the agenda as soon as she's able to. So that brings us to council updates. Recreation here, Andrew Ford. Kathy?
As I'm throwing my things all over the place.
So.
I don't know if I can beat that. Olivia just.
Carl, would you be kind enough to, uh, remove our, our used plastic bag there?
I can talk really loud.
Well, you need to make sure the public hear you, I'm glad. Plus, we need to make sure you get your own free plastic bag also.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so another year, um. Let's see, where do I start? We ran five activities. One was two sessions for recreation this year. We did a pickleball clinic. We did open gym. We collected $146.75, seven, $146.75 in our fee will donations for open gym. We explored several different new activities, um, which will be taken forward into 2021 if we're allowed. And some notable things, um, the baseball guys did their scoreboard. They took the money from 501 that their salaries go to every year and bought a scoreboard, volunteered their time, put that up. And, um, the other notable thing, um, this year was the hydrant parties, which obviously came out of COVID because safe activities to do. And the biggest thanks I have is to Gary Baker with the radio, um, Brett Nottgall with the paper, Chris Kackey, Carl Bach, Bachart, Bachert, um, Streets and Park Department, John Gregory, Chris Hansen, and Dawn Johnson. And most of all, for letting us do whatever recreation we could this year. And I didn't use all my hours, first time ever. So, questions? It's pretty simple to report here. And we're definitely within budget. I'm missing.
As you talked with other recreation folks around the state or where.
Yeah.
Um, were they seeing the same things that you were seeing in Hot Springs? Or were we behind them? Were we ahead of them a little bit?
Um, we're pretty much average with everybody else. You know, several shut down completely, like Rapid City. Many did not shut down. And for the most part, um, we're status quo with everybody else. We did run a few more things. I mean, I was really thrilled to be able to do the things we did when places like Rapid didn't do anything. Sioux Falls, you know, they did quite a bit. But so did a lot of, it really was a, an interesting year across the state, quite frankly. So for us to be able to do the things we did, you know, I, I can't say thank you enough to everybody for that because I know the pickleball kids and adults loved it. So we did, we do have some programs going forward with both, um, instructor setup and everything for adults and for kids and for toddlers. It's just a matter to see when we can do it. So it was an interesting year.
Well, we appreciate your, your diligence in doing what you could do in a, in a time where the, the target is always changing and moving and.
Right.
There's a lot of uncertainty, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, thank you for everything you do, Kathy. And I particularly appreciate you, uh, being able to keep the pickleball program because we've talked about before, saying pickleball just makes me happy.
It makes me happy too.
Thank you. All right, well, it takes us to personnel. Can I get a, uh, motion to approve personnel actions A through C?
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through C.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our first and only ordinance item, uh, item A, second reading of ordinance 1222, and ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances. Motion on that, please. Make a motion to approve the second reading of 12, ordinance 1222, and ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Hot Springs and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
Wes Grimes?
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Ray Brony?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The ordinance is approved. Need a motion for resolution 2020 dash 34, contingency transfer resolution.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2020 dash 34, contingency transfer resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. New business item A, possible motion discussion to approve the emergency 2021 garbage service contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency 2021 garbage service contract with Sanders Sanitation, $10.34 and $3.98 recycling.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This decided to be a possible motion discussion to. This decided to be a possible motion discussion to authorize the mayor to sign a corrective quick claim deed.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a corrective quick claim deed granting all interest in all that portion of the Burlington Northern Railroad Company's fifty-foot wide Minicotta to Hot Springs, South Dakota branch line right away. Now discontinued, being twenty-five feet wide on each side of the main track centerline, as originally located and constructed upon over, across the south half, the south half, the southeast quarter of section ten, township seven, south range five east of the Black Hills Meridian, Fall River County, South Dakota, from the city of Hot Springs to Donna Jennings.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item C, possible motion discussion to approve two thousand twenty-one Evans Plunge Mineral Springs assignment.
Make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one Evans Plunge Mineral Springs assignment of lease site for billboard located south of Maverick Junction on U.S. Highway eighteen-three-eighty-five with Gary and Sharon Romi.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item D, possible motion discussion to approve two thousand twenty-one Evans Plunge Mineral Springs assignment.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one Evans Plunge Mineral Springs assignment of lease site for billboard located south of Minicotta Junction on U.S. Highway eighteen with Scott Phillips.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item P, possible motion discussion to reappoint Vicki. I apologize, Vicki, I've been putting your name. How? And Vicki Wetzel to the Business Improvement Board.
I make a motion to reappoint Vicki How and Vicki Wetzel to the Business Improvement District Board for three-year terms, two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item L, possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to transfer two thousand twenty subsidies.
Make a motion to authorize finance officer to transfer two thousand twenty subsidies budgeted from two twelve additional sales tax to six twenty-one Evans Plunge in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Second. Discussion?
Is this for payment?
No, this is the budgeted subsidy. The amount needed to cover the expenditures for the year. We budgeted ninety-eight thousand five hundred and ten dollars, but we didn't need to use all of it. And we didn't need to use any of the dollars this year.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item G, possible motion discussion to approve budgeted two thousand twenty-one cost of living increase.
I would make a motion for the possible motion or the budgeted twenty-one coal increase of thirty cents an hour for all full-time employees effective January first, twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item H, possible motion discussion to approve two thousand twenty-one hourly rate increase.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one hourly rate increase of fifteen cents per hour for all part-time and seasonal employees effective January first, twenty-one. The amount is equal to the amount of the required state minimum wage increase.
Second motion. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item I, possible motion discussion to accept the two thousand twenty-one economic development grant.
I'll make a motion to accept a two thousand twenty-one economic development grant from the State Department of Transportation for project C A zero-two-one-A P C N zero-eight-D T and authorize the mayor to sign the Community Access Grant Agreement. The five hundred eighty thousand grant will be used to assist in the improvement of all portions of Seventeenth Street, Nineteenth Street, Lincoln, Washington, and Jennings Avenue. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, what is this?
Yes. Good job.
Uh, this is a grant to replace all the sewer and water infrastructure and repave the roads around the school.
Okay.
How far do they go off the streets?
One block over on each street. One block down.
One block past the school or just where the school is?
The school, one block to the west.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item J, possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of two hundred forty-four thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-one cents to the additional sales tax fund two-one-two-dash-two-one-two-zero-zero-dash-four-three-three-zero-zero for the Jennings Avenue Bridge construction reimbursement revenue received from the big grant funding.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item K, possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to reissue the maturing C D at First Interstate.
I'll make a motion to authorize the finance officer to reissue the maturing C D at First Interstate, number six-eight-zero-one-zero-zero-one-zero-seven-seven-six-zero-two-water for a twelve-month term at point fifteen percent.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item I, possible motion discussion to approve and advertise the request for proposals for the West Coast building demolition. And I'll remind you, this was the one that we amended to bids received from February first to February tenth.
I'll make a motion to approve and advertise a request for proposals, R F P, twenty twenty-one for the West Coast Building Demolition Services with City retaining salvageable sandstones, which includes an alternate add-on cost bid item for saving the West Coast side. Bids received until February tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion?
Is there any way we can act at this for some of the contents in the building? Or do we have to do that?
We have an onsite meeting on the eleventh of January to decide if we're salvaging any of the contents and will be part of an addendum listed in the R F P deadline.
May I?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item M, possible motion discussion to approve and advertise the request for proposals for base plus three-year City of Hot Springs Lighting and Maintenance Agreement.
Make a motion to approve and advertise the request for proposals, R F P, for a base plus three-year City of Hot Springs Lighting and Maintenance Agreement contract for all three hundred and seventy-six city-owned street parking and walkway lights, which include Highway three-eighty-five, Highway eighteen bypass, University Avenue, Evans Plunge, Freedom Trail, Golf Course, Mueller Center, traffic signal, et cetera. Excludes
Black Hills Energy.
Black Hills Energy Street Lighting, bids received until February tenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second motion. Did you get the second?
I got J R.
Discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right along. End of our committee reports. Administrator to finance, Caitlin?
Our next meeting is Monday, January fourth, at one P M at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Therefore, advisory committee, Bill?
Next meeting is Thursday, December thirty-first, eight A M at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
Next meeting will be January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Our next meeting is January sixth, Wednesday, um, at five P M at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge, Larry?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee meeting agenda is December tenth, twenty twenty, at twelve P M at the Evans Plunge. Committee members were Sandy Ferguson, Chris Hansen, Kathy Moran, Joshua Johnson, Tom Naez, Allison Bird Bush, Mayor Smith absent. Remainder present and personal by phone. Also present was Mayor Nelson, Brandon Smith, Neil Miller, and Don Hoaks. Everybody was welcome. Public comments, guests intended to ask for consideration of extended hours and reopening of the health club. Hours of operation discussion, reassessment of the hours of operation staffing concerns. Feedback has been positive regarding open early in Saturday, Sunday. We currently have three individuals who have begun L G training. If all pass and are lifeguard training, if all pass and are certified, we are likely to be able to reopen to more record hours after Christmas. This will require sanitizing closures again. We are proposing that changing hours would begin on approximately December twenty-sixth, as open daily six A Ms at seven P M. Mondays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, close Tuesdays. Saturday and Sunday open either eight A M, six P M, or ten A M, ten A M, six P M. We will keep E P A C members advised by email as we move toward adding hours. Update on Health Club renovation project closure, twenty twenty-one digs. Tom provided updates on his tightly contacts and brought some product samples for viewing. He will put together information for an R F P so that those can go out soon. We are tentatively planning for closure March first, noon to fourteen for that project. Next meeting for January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, noon at the environment, the E P M S.
I'm sorry, get the next meeting.
January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Sorry about that, my tongue trip.
Any questions for Larry? Thank you, Larry. Parks, Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Wes?
Next meeting will be the first Wednesday, January three o'clock, Mueller Center.
Planning zoning, Caitlin?
Uh, planning zoning met last Wednesday, but I was unable to attend, so I'll have a copy of their official minutes at the next meeting to report. Um, our next meeting is Wednesday, January twentieth, at six P M at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill and J R?
Uh, Public Safety met on Wednesday, December sixteenth, at one P M here at the Mueller Center. Present were the mayor, myself, J R, Deb, Larry, John Gregory, Chief Close, and one member of the public. Chief Close provided an update of, from the police department. We've got one officer out on family leave and another officer suffered, suffered an off-the-job injury and will be off as much as two months. So currently, we've got four officers, uh, four members covering all four shifts. Uh, the department is working on getting campers and trailers moved for the new traffic ordinance. And our new officer, Officer Shively, has started working and he is currently working on shift with the other officers. In November, the department responded to four hundred and thirty-six calls. Under Old Business, we reviewed an outline for a potential police department vehicle policy. As of the date of the meeting, we've received no information from the Army Corps of Engineers or our insurance carrier uh, regarding the discussions for a railing on the flood wall at America's Best Value Inn. And there's also been no guidance provided regarding Amendment A or initiated Measure twenty-six, and so no action's been taken on that. This item will be dropped from Old Business until it's being actively worked. The Public Safety Committee Charter was, received a final review and was adopted. Under New Business, emergency manager Frank Maynard had notified us previously that the Code Red system could be used to notify the public of events such as the major water line break that we had on River Street earlier this year. As the system has the capability to make notifications via text, email, and even call landlines, we encourage everyone to enroll in this service. Uh, you can find out more about this service by going to the city's website, clicking on menu, and then select Code Red Emergency Notifications. Next, we often get requests for traffic control signs at various intersections throughout the city. In an effort to ensure consistency, we're putting together a small team made up of a member from the police department and a member of the street department to conduct a systematic review of the city and submit recommendations to the committee for street sign, or for traffic control signs. In other items brought to the committee, we discussed public safety concerns associated with client activities at the Skyline Motel. These issues will continue to be investigated. Secondly, residents' concerns regarding speeding on Evanston Avenue were brought to the committee again along with a request for installation of removable speed bumps. Past efforts to address this issue were discussed, and the concerns associated with the requested speed bumps were also reviewed. The meeting ended at two eighteen P M, and our next meeting will be Wednesday, January twentieth, one P M at the Mueller Center. J R, did I miss anything?
Did not, sir. Nothing further to add. Thank you. Any questions for Bill or J R? Thank you, gentlemen. Public Works, Craig?
I was late. John's got minutes.
Uh, I will take over for this one. The Public Works Committee met on December twelfth at one o'clock at the Mueller Center. Present were Debbie, Boris, Craig, Romi, Tracy, Scott, Mayor, and one guest, Jim Robey.
John? Can you try to get the microphone a little closer for us? Thank you.
First topic was the Jennings Bridge Project. They had a progress meeting on the sixteenth, which was, decided they were going to try to be open by Christmas. We talked about nuisance violations that affect snowplow, including some campers and other recreational vehicles that remain on our streets. They need to be tagged. On suspended sidewalk, we identified twenty-three sandstone blocks that could be used for the decorative benches between the columns. We talked about vacating the alley at the ornery property. That will be sent to P M Z for further discussion with Scott. Streets and Maintenance Department indicated today would be back on alley maintenance mid-January. Demolition of the spring vault at Lower Chitico is scheduled for the first of January. Currently, we're working on Fall River restoration with deed slur construction to remove the cattails between Jennings Bridge and the walking bridge. The Utilities Department, sewer repairs were done at the Blue Mesa. There's still an additional sewer repair to be done near the Episcopal Church. The Evans Pump Station pump replacement has been ordered, and the crane is on the stand line. We have a easement issue at Hickory Street that's being worked on, so we get the jetty completed. We talked about the water valve and line connection for the water leak that was installed at Jennings Bridge. Utilities Department is also looking to hire an additional water department, wastewater department person. Utilities Department is also working to repair a P R V valve near the golf course that has failed. They're working to get more orders. Near the golf course, it's failed. They're working to get more orders. Code Enforcement Department talked about parking ordinances that became effective on the twenty-second of November. The number of initial warnings have been gone out in conjunction with the police department, the ACO, and the code official. Talked about nuisance properties, what was being done about those. Also, ongoing parking violations including non-operational vehicles, campers, trailers, junked-up residential properties. PD is, police department has tagged a few vehicles. Planning is only will continue to look at the ornery. That location. Uh, New Business, we talked about the RFPs with the street lighting maintenance. The RFP for the West Coast building, which included salvaging standstone, and it was scheduled to be on this agenda, if you approve. We talked briefly about the North River Street reconstruction in front of Evans Plunge. We have received three quotes on that and for the engineering design, we will be talking about that in twenty twenty-one. The brush pile burn was discussed briefly. We're putting now a February date pending some rain events. Talked briefly about the standard sanitation taking over the garbage collection service contract, official effective January first of twenty-one. We talked about the list of current damages that occurred during the fiber optic installation. Getting that work done before they start next season. And that sums up our basic conversations. Uh, next meeting was scheduled for December twenty-ninth, which has been uh canceled. Our next meeting will actually be January twelfth at one PM at the Mueller Center. Did I leave anything out, Craig?
Half me not there, but you did.
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. Southern Hills Economic Development, JR?
I have nothing to report this week.
Thank you. Uh, Southern Hills Golf Course, those uh committee meetings have been suspended uh while the course is closed. If there's anything that we need to talk about, then we'll call a special meeting, uh but I would expect that to start back up until uh maybe April? March, late March, early April. Misty, here I am.
Thank you. We have officially posted the opening for a new full-time administrative assistant at City Hall. I want to clarify that this is not a replacement of an existing employee. This is a new position that will assist the finance office as well as the development coordinator and the utility billing clerk. It's a full-time benefited position with the city. Here John talked about other current openings, which include a full-time water maintenance operator, a full-time animal control officer, part-time maintenance operator, uh and part-time lifeguards at Evans Plunge. We're moving forward with the planned twenty twenty-one purchase and implementation of new time tracking software that was approved of the budget. It's designed to work in conjunction with our existing payroll software. It can be a time clock with barcode access cards available or allow for manual entries. We're very excited to begin rolling this out to all departments within the city as soon as possible in the new year. I received a citizen request to remove the word downtown from the Historic Preservation Commission uh reports. Um, the district represents more than just downtown businesses, so you may have noticed that. Um, the committee reports were no longer, I don't know how downtown got there, it just was there and we always had it there, so um we did remove that. And on December eighteenth, Governor Noem signed an executive order twenty twenty dash thirty-four, extending a number of previously suspended statutes and administrative rules and terminating some related to the COVID nineteen outbreak. If you're interested, more details can be found at covid dot S P dot gov backslash executive orders. I wanted to remind everyone that the city offices will be closed the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of December, and also wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Questions for Misty?
You say the office will be closed the twenty-fourth of, it's just a new on the twenty-fourth.
It's the thirty-first, Wes. New Year's Day, uh, New Year's Eve.
Oh, you said the twenty-fourth. Twenty-fifth, I thought.
Twenty-fourth is Christmas, we're gonna be closed all day on the twenty-fourth.
Does the state get all day too?
Yes. We follow your stage on the stage.
Any other questions for Misty? John?
Good evening, everyone. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Uh, I met with Zoom meeting with US Army Corps of Engineers with an update of the hydrology report with Fall River. The last update was done in nineteen ninety-seven, so they have all the new data for twenty twenty to change the basin peak flood data, so it's essentially an updated flood study. This is the first one official since cold-broken cottonwood dam construction was completed, but we have significantly lower elevations for our peak flood timing, which was very interesting. They also have LiDAR data now where they have mapped the entire drainage basin, so that information is being calculated into into a model, so they can tell that what how much rain it'll take for us to start getting excited about potential flood. They will no longer use the nineteen forty-one Swedish Kenyan data since that was brought to their attention. Been talking with the DOT about wave finding signage, this is work could be done in August of two thousand sixteen. We've got a meeting planned with the DOT, uh and some stakeholders that have an interest around mid-January. Uh, one of the big ideas that we're pushing for is an aerial location signage on I ninety eight to sixty-one, basically giving direction this way to Hot Springs. Jennings Bridge, Eastland Roads had their progress meeting. They are rapidly approaching bridge opening. They have indicated that we're gonna be open by uh Christmas Eve, and I sure hope they do. I notice the truck was sitting in the middle of the bridge that today, so that says, you know, easy to get a vehicle on through it now. They finishing up the back fill with the abutments. We still have electrical wiring grids. And we have to restore the river channel bottom to get the flow back to where it's supposed to be and the bridge removed the cattails for the City of Hot Springs. In the spring, they'll have to come back for some additional work, which will include asphalt placement at the approaches and repairs at Legion Parking Lot, uh South River Street, and also around the main parking lot there in Centennial Park. Concrete curb and sidewalk will also be restored at that time. I've been real busy with the RFP preparations with assistance of the finance office for the West Coast demolition and abatement. It's a specific cost request. It includes salvage of the sandstones from the east and west ends, isolation and protection of the neighboring structure to the south. It includes an option to stabilize and retain the west facade as an additional cost. Has a dead opening date from this council on the sixteenth of February. They also have the plan lighting maintenance contract. This is got a base year, which will be March first through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. It's kind of our ten-month. It's another kind of time period since we did not renew at the end of this year. That will be the first opportunity we have to get a new contract underway. We do have an option in there to exercise three additional new contract terms if we decide that's the direction we want to go. Currently, there are three hundred and seventy-six city streetlights, pedestrian lights, and traffic lights. We have prepared the emergency garbage collection services contract. Uh, the standard sanitation being a little bit, or this will begin January first, twenty twenty, morning. It includes residential weekly collection and monthly recycling services. Our Streets Maintenance and Utilities Department have been building, rebuilding the baseball field bleachers. Have, they have begun some work in the alley areas. They've also itemized and assessed the damages to fiber optic installer and itemized and photographed all that. Utilities Department has been working on various sewer and waterline repairs and preparing for the pump installation at Evans Plunge Pump Station. Evans Plunge Heat Card Committee discussed additional lifeguards. They're hoping to have three. Currently, they've got one of the three planned. They are going to adjust the opening-closing time for the holidays. They'll be open from six AM to one PM day three, uh Christmas Eve. They'll be closed Christmas. They'll be open from ten AM to six PM, set following Saturday and Sunday. And then six AM to seven PM in twelve forty-eight for January first. Ten AM to six PM on the weekend of the second of November. The Health, the Health Club upgrades plan during the annual shutdown. In addition to the routine maintenance requirements, uh will include tile setting and hot tub improvements in the Health Club. They're still hiring lifeguards and their people. Well, I thank the council, our devoted city employees, and the citizens for maintaining the best of a challenging twenty twenty year with COVID. We imagine the city operations and local business.
Any questions for John?
Thank you, John. Uh, before I get into my prepared address report, uh I want to mention that on December eleventh, uh Bill, John, and I had an opportunity uh to meet and talk with First Gentman of South Dakota, Brian Noem. John and I were able to uh talk with him about the suspended sidewalk, the road reconstruction, the uh channel, uh river channel revitalization that's happening on North River Street, uh letting him see uh what's happening there. Uh, we shared with him the prints that you folks have seen about uh what the sidewalk uh we hope will look like. Uh, he was very excited about those, asking to share those prints uh and our vision uh with the governor when he gets back to, when he got back to Pier. After that, we went on to lunch with him, we went on to dinner with him at Wally's and had a chance to sit down and chat with him and uh he uh, both he and the governor grew up in rural uh South Dakota, so small towns are important to them. Uh, the governor or the first element has made it his mission to go around and talk to small communities and chat with us about uh what our challenges are, what we're uh all about, what we're trying to get accomplished. Uh, and we were able to do that. We talked with him about uh the impact of COVID and the aid that the state has provided. Uh, Misty gave us quite a detailed list of things that we could share with him. And we just talked about a number of things, uh our historic heritage, just quite a few things. Uh, it was a pleasure to meet with him. He was very casual. Uh, didn't seem to want to rush to get uh get back on the road. When he was leaving Hot Springs, he was still driving back to Pier. So he gave us what I feel was adequate time to to share with him um what's important to us and what we've been doing to uh move Hot Springs forward. So I wanted to share that with you folks. Twenty twenty quickly became a year that challenged our community, our city employees, and the city council. The COVID virus created many situations that we didn't have immediate answers for. How would the virus impact our revenue? How would it impact many projects that were already in progress or projects that were starting in twenty uh two thousand twenty? How would the residents of Hot Springs and Fall River County be affected by the virus? The virus has taken members of our community from us, and we should remember these individuals in the years to come. They will forever be a part of the story we share with each other down the road about the COVID virus in two thousand twenty. As the city of Hot Springs, the impact of the virus didn't hit us as hard as we originally feared. Revenue was down in some cases and up in others. Our employees continue to provide great service to our residents in spite of some of those employees dealing with the virus themselves. The fellow employee, the fellow workers stepped up to continue providing the best service they could with the limited staffing. My hope is, with the availability of two new COVID vaccines, all of us will begin talking about the virus in the past tense and life will return to more of a pre-COVID norm. To our city employees, thank you for your continued professionalism you demonstrate every day as you work to serve your fellow constituents. To the city council, thank you for the commitment you bring to serving your fellow constituents. It's not easy to make the right decision for the future of Hot Springs. Knowing that decision may be the exact opposite to what some of your voters want from you. To the residents of Hot Springs, thank you for your participation in the day-to-day running of Hot Springs. Your voice is at the heart of a progressive and prosperous community. You need to hold your council representatives and myself accountable. When we don't meet your expectations where we can, we should strive to be better in the future. And finally, as we close out two thousand twenty and look to two thousand twenty-one with excitement for all the possibilities and opportunities Hot Springs has in front of us, I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
With that, we get a motion to go on the executive session per South Dakota Civil Law one dash twenty-five dash two dash one. Personell and make a motion we go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota Civil Law one dash twenty-five dash two dash one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes and there won't be any action after executive session.